Our invocation this evening is not able to make it due to illness. She called this afternoon. So Leland Scott has volunteered.
Deer in the headlights up there.
Will there be a critique?
At the urging, no, I told him, yeah.
He did.
Whatever he wants to say is fine indeed. So let's have Leland on for the invocation.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come to you again. And we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask that you be with us throughout the proceedings, that we may understand and know each thing that we have to discuss. In Jesus' name we ask you, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Leland. And the prayer. Bob Porter. Just got three minutes.
I know.
His shirt was there when I went by.
It was. My watch says four minutes to. About quarter. And here it is. At nine.
Right at you.
Sixty seconds.
I just said your name.
What more do you need?
I try. For her, I'm going to spend a little too much.
Yeah, you're good. You have three minutes. About two minutes. That's it. Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order and have the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a quorum. We do have two council members missing tonight, but they had let me know that they would not be here. So let's have our roll call. Devin? Randy Coffey. Mike Connell. Mindy Galbavake here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Alan Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sumayam.
Here.
All of the council members, Randy Coffey and Mike Connell. And looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move the agenda to be adopted as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And looking at the minutes from our last meeting, looking for reading and approval of those minutes.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the September 16th, 2021 writer meeting.
Second. I have a motion by Steve and a second from me to suspend the rules and waive the reading of those minutes and approve them. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we now are at our pre-approved reports and presentations. And I'm just going to jump on with this brief thing before I have Mr. Hissong take the podium and introduce Nick Jones. Nick has volunteered to serve in a vacant planning commission seat. He has attended a planning commission meeting and said, okay, I think I can get along with those people. So he is here to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about himself.
Sure. Thank you, Sue, for that introduction. That's exactly right. So my name is Nicholas Jones. I'm 30 years old. I grew up in the Owasso area, went to the Coruna schools, graduated from Coruna High School. I moved on to go to college at Central Michigan University where I studied accounting and received a bachelor's degree. I actively worked as a finance operations manager for a company out in Lansing. And so initially, when I was living in Owasso, I had my daughter, who is now eight years old and attends Perry Public Schools, go to Perry as a way to sort of bridge the gap between Lansing, where I was working, and Owasso where I was living. However, after about three or four years ago, I did move to Perry and I've been a resident in the Perry area since. We enjoy this community. I have an active interest in seeing that this community is continuously improving. And I hope to, you know, add value in whatever way that I can by joining the planning commission. So pleased to be here, pleased to meet you all. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask me. I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have a question?
I do.
Joe, Joe's our treasurer.
I'm the treasurer. I heard I asked him earlier. How did you hear about our open position here at City Hall and the Planning Commission? Only because whenever we have positions that are open, we have to circulate it and we would like to know what was, what would be the best way.
Sure. So pretty simple. My daughter's best friend at school, her mother, reached out to me about a year and a half ago and wanted to schedule a playdate. Her name is Melissa and we've been best friends ever since and our daughters get along. And so she is actually neighbors with Bob Aki, who is on the planning commission and...
That's who you know.
And so through word of mouth, I was invited to attend the meeting and see if it was a good fit, so.
Good, thank you.
Council members, anyone else have any questions for him?
Well, we had a good discussion Monday night and I appreciate his willingness to serve.
Yes, we do. Okay, well, I'm going to let you have a seat and he may have to leave. He will leave when he needs to because of family commitments. But I appreciate your coming tonight on such short notice.
Of course. Thank you all.
And now we'll move to our guest, James Hissong. Am I saying that right, James?
Yeah, actually that's spot on.
Very good. Grantmanship Consulting LLC. Larry, do you have anything to say in introduction?
No, I brought it up in our last couple of meetings and quite honestly threw a little bit of a website, internet search, came across James's name and his company and had a good conversation with him, then discussed it here in our last council meeting and reached out and asked James to be here, share a little bit about himself, his company and some examples of, you know, grants that he has been successful at landing for other municipalities and activities and... You're eager to hear a little bit about yourself and like I mentioned, we're in the throes of trying to decide whether or not someone like yourself or your company might be a good fit for some of the things we want to try to do here in Perry.
Sure. Well, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you so much. My name's James Hissong. I grew up in Michigan, went to school at Western Michigan University where I earned a master's in public administration. And following my program, started working as a grant writer, first in the nonprofit sector and then transitioning to local government. So I was an internal grant writer for, I believe, three years with St. Joseph County, just south of Kalamazoo there, and served as the grant writer for the county, but also the city of Three Rivers, the city of Sturgis and the village of Centerville. And so it was a unique position where the county actually funded my position, but then they loaned me out to individual municipalities because like Perry, there wasn't really a need for a full-time position, but many people had that need for grants as they came up here and there. And so it was an interesting structure. And then as I evolved in that position, I eventually still remained with St. Joseph County, but transitioned into an independent contractor relationship. And that's when I started my company, Grantsmanship Consulting. So today, we work with both municipalities and also K-12 schools as well as nonprofit organizations to pursue grant opportunities. But I'd say about, still about 50% of what we do is in the local government for municipalities throughout Michigan. So I provided some information, I think, in the packets on, you know, just some examples of grants. And so where it was a public project, I put the client and information about that project. And this is just a selection site. I think I only put on their, you know, relevant municipal-related grants. We do other grants in the educational sphere, but I think I tried to keep it to what I thought might be relevant to Perry. And so when I was talking to Larry, he asked me to put together maybe a proposal of sorts. And that can be difficult to do, especially as I'm new to the community and have limited knowledge about your needs and what sort of things that you pursued in the past or are looking to pursue in the future. And so when I gave it some thought, I prepared a retainer agreement structure that's pretty minimal. It's a 10-hour per month, which is only, yeah, just a couple hours a week to start. And the reason I did that is because I think that part of what I heard Larry say was that there's some assistance in terms of just navigating what grants are out there, cultivating grants that you could pursue or, you know, just understanding the eligibility requirements, what would make the city competitive in those grant applications and things of that nature. And so I thought that a base level where you have that support, one, we would send grant alerts when new opportunities come about. And so we actively monitor for grants. It's hard because there's no one clearinghouse. There is at the federal level for federal grants, but in the state of Michigan, there's really not a centralized source that you can go to and say, okay, here's where all state grants come through. And so it does take some monitoring and that comes through sometimes newsletters from different departments, sometimes it's press releases from the state, sometimes it's just those annual programs that you know are reoccurring every year. And so we try to get out in front, not to say that the grants don't sometimes catch you by surprise, that's the fun part of grants, right? They give this 30-day window and sometimes if you don't know about it in advance, it can be very hard to prepare for in time. But to the extent possible, we try to send those notices out early so that communities have the best chance to organize, think through if it's a good fit and then decide if they want to pursue those opportunities. And so, you know, 10 hours a month won't be enough to write the grants. It could be, you know, if one opportunity comes up and it's relatively smaller or if it's, you know, coaching somebody through that application, because not all grants, I would say, would require the assistance of a grant writer. There might be times where you have questions about a grant and that I can provide that technical assistance without actually having to write the full grant myself or just being there as a resource to somebody that is looking at that grant has questions. Other times you might want, you know, you might not have the capacity for it to even pursue it. And at that time, I proposed entering into sort of like a project-by-project structure. And at that point, you know, it's hard to give a solid estimate. So I think I included sort of like a chart of like what, what a simple grant could look like, what even goes into a grant, what does it take to write a grant, how, and it's really hard even to categorize it in those broad terms, but I provide that to clients so that they understand the, just a general range. A grant could take 20 hours or if you're pursuing, you know, an EDA grant from the federal level, that could be 100 hours, right? And so it's hard to stay, you know, this is how much a one particular project could cost. And so it's based on the hourly rate and then I would provide a not-to-exceed estimate once I'm able to look at the grant guidelines and have a relative good understanding of what it would involve.
Sure. You were talking about grants from the county and from the state and from the federal. Federal might take a lot more time. What about the reporting requirements that are, once you apply for a grant, you get a grant, you successfully, then the reporting starts of the forms you have to fill out and what you have to do? Are you available for assistance when it comes to doing that part of it? Because that is a big piece of it.
Yeah, it is, in monitoring and tracking. And it's a big piece of just not only fulfilling that obligation, but then also being eligible for the next time that grant comes out. Because if you fall through on the reporting side, then you can damage those relationships and... So depending on, you know, what level, right, I think that you'd have to have some of your own internal capacity to track, obviously.
Sure.
Financials and that sort of thing. But what I have, I do assist with reporting. A lot of times reports will have like two different sections. There'll be a financial report and then there'll be a performance report. And so the performance report, it certainly requires somebody to stay engaged throughout the project. And so if you don't have that internal capacity, that is something we could schedule, you know, regular check-ins to just make sure that the grant is on track and then, you know, assist in the reporting process. And sometimes it's, you know, we're asked to just look over a report and it really varies in the complexity of what the grant is. Some funders will want to see, you know, really detailed project outcomes and an evaluation plan. And, you know, that, it really depends on what you submitted. There are other grants that are less intensive and so I think it could be kind of on an individual basis.
I would think too, as we are more familiar with dealing with grants and the reporting processes, that then we wouldn't maybe need quite so much handholding, you know, as the years go on, but...
Absolutely. I'm assuming in terms of, you and I use the term I call it mining for grant opportunities. I'm assuming there's two ways, probably multiple ways to look at it. One is you're going to go looking for any grants that might be applicable. Another that I would think is looking for, I'll call it targeted grants, if we said that we wanted to look at improving our local library or improving our sidewalk structure as just a couple of examples, those might be ones that I would think would be a little easier to mine, to say, is there anything out there currently? And then watch the horizon to see if anything does come up in the future.
Definitely. I think I would say it's almost 50/50 where sometimes it's more opportunistic. And I say that in a good way, not that, you know, it's, but the grants that are defined at the state level or whatever the granting agency level is, that these are the programs that they're going to put out in RFP. And at that time, one of the ways to stay ahead of that is to, so with a new budget, for instance, we get that and we look through to see what grant programs are funded, what's coming down the pipeline and try to stay on top of when those would be announced. And so there's some that come to you in terms of you'll catch it from a newsletter or maybe it's your professional association that's sending you information about grants. And so I'll have clients forward me grants that we didn't necessarily find, but maybe it's through a private foundation or a different source that just wasn't on our radar for whatever reason. And then we'll analyze that for them or we'll send a grant through a state department or another source that we do catch. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we tri-monter for those. And then help people determine, okay, is this a fit for the community or is this something that, you know, we pass on? And so there is that sort of go or no-go decision process. And so I, one of the things to think through would be who, who would we be working with at the city level that would help kind of make those determinations? Is that council members, is that treasurer, is that, you know, somebody that would help and identify sort of a project team when those opportunities come up? And it could be, depending on the grant itself. But then once, so there's those that come to you. And then, like you said, there could be a need where you try to find resources that fit. Luckily, you know, we have, I say we because I do have two associate writers that work with me, but I would be the point of contact for City Perry, but they would work on projects from time to time. But we have a pretty good understanding of different programs. So when you said the USDA program that could potentially, it sounded like the city just received a grant maybe for a vehicle, I'm almost positive that would be the community facility program, right? There's other grants out there, so when you're saying sidewalks, it's hard to fund, you know, sidewalks by themselves, but there's programs, MDOT Transportation Alternatives Program, there is a program called Safe Routes to School that sometimes you can look at various ways of getting sidewalks funded that might not be a sidewalk grant per se, but could fund a sidewalk. And so, you know, we're pretty good at navigating and understanding what programs are out there. But certainly we can also do a deep dive for projects. And we have two different proprietary grant databases that we subscribe to. One is the Foundation Center Online Directory and that allows us to find both public funding but also private funding, which can be harder to navigate. And that includes both like family foundations or corporate foundations. And so typically you'll see that more in the nonprofit sector versus municipality level. But certainly police, fire, things of that nature, you don't want to rule out that there are organizations that would support certain services that might not come through the state or federal level. And then we also have been working on website monitoring. So what I do, we set alerts for websites that we know grants will be posted on and then every time that website changes, we get an alert to go see what it is. And so if we don't catch it through a press release or a newsletter, we started to set these alerts, especially for the departments that we know issue a lot of grants. And so that helps us try to stand up for it.
I have a couple of questions. One, to go off Larry's point, do we like give you a list of things we're hoping to fund and then you look for those grants?
Yeah, I would love to sit down, if we move forward with the contract, I'd love to sit down with whatever stakeholders would like to be involved and kind of help assess needs and, you know, if you have those lists, kind of, you know, it depends, I don't know if you have your master planner, however those lists are kind of generated. I know that can help prioritize things. Or if you're not there but just have an in-depth understanding because you know the needs of the community, you know, we can give that information and start prioritizing, okay, here's what to look for. And then it also helps, you know, if we do, if something does come across, it's like, oh, that's a fit for this project. So I think that that would probably be one of the first steps would be to talk through and better understand.
And also, excuse me, how do you track your time when you're working for us or the next person down the street or whatever? Just have like...
We use an app called Harvest. So it's just a time tracking tool. And then when we invoice each month, it includes a detailed report of hours. And so even, and I'm open to other structures, but in the contract that I put in there for 10 hours, what I did put was that if you didn't use 10 hours in a given month, it could roll over to one subsequent month so that you didn't feel like you had wasted, you know, your time that month because there just wasn't as much need or opportunities that came out. So usually, and I think at, you know, the lower level of just 10 hours, I don't think you'd be in danger of kind of wasting or not using those hours.
Would they only roll over one month or they could accumulate or if you have a maximum, they could accumulate too?
So I found that it really, it's really challenging if they roll over for more than one month to manage that. So I would say if it, if it starts to become too much where you're just not using it, then it's talk, there's a termination clause in there, let's talk about maybe, you know, reducing hours or thinking through a different structure, so. And I think we've done that before too.
Anybody else have a question? Miss Treasurer?
I do have a question. What would, if we are moving forward with the grant writing, it's so cheap for grants, what would be your recommendation for like housekeeping stuff that we can do? I know we have a master plan. It has a parks, a five-year parks plan, which expired, I want to say, 18, 2018. So, I mean, like what, what things can we do now to get prepared for this? Make a wish list, work on our parks plan? I mean, because when it comes time for you to do the grant, you're going to say, okay, I need this piece done, I need this piece done, I need this piece done. What would you recommend us to start on right now? That we can do before we get started?
Yeah, so there are, it's great to hear about the parks plan because that's one of the questions I have. Parks are obviously one of the things that is very grant fundable.
You just made that quarter.
That's my commitment. So, and I, I'm the person that gets to the airport like three hours before his flight because I just need to, you know, so coming here for the first time, actually got here early and drove around a bit. So I went to Jubilee Park and saw some of the equipment there and, you know, that, you know, some of the upgrade or updates to some of that equipment could be something that would score very well, especially the play equipment, because they prioritize things like renovation projects, they prioritize communities that have limited amenities. And so, but one of the, or one of the requirements is that you have a parks plan for most of the DNR grants. There is a small caveat that the Recreation Passport Program, which can go up to 150,000, you can apply for that program without an improved parks plan as long as the project that you're applying for is included in a city-approved capital improvement plan as part of your budget. So depending on, you know, how you structure your budgeting process, if you have a capital improvement plan, sometimes you don't need to have a full parks plan, at least for the Rec Passport Program. For other grants that the DNR manages, the Trust Fund, Land and Water Conservation Fund, there are requirements that you have a parks plan. And so we, we don't do planning, but we can help recommend folks if you're looking for assistance. But there are things like that that make a community more grant-ready when those opportunities come up. We can talk through that. You know, there, I, when I was driving through downtown or right here on the main strip, I wondered, you know, if Perry is available or is eligible for support through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. There's certain requirements for grants that come through there. I think they say you have to have like 20 contiguous downtown, downtown district and like a zero lot line. And so driving through, I thought, you know, you're going to be close, so I don't know if you've received support through the MDC in the past, but there are programs that you could access that would help with community development. There's a really popular program called the Public Spaces Community Places Program. It's actually half crowdfunding, half grant. So if you can help raise so much and hit your goal, then you get a grant to match that. And that can be used for a really wide array of different projects. So it really just depends on, you know, we'd have to dig in more, see what community's eligible for, and then also, you know, make sure it's a need and that it fits. But there are a lot of opportunities where, you know, the different requirements, we can help navigate through those.
James, where's your business base?
So I'm out of Kalamazoo. And so that is one thing, you know, if you would anticipate that there's in-person, you know, I would have to think about how to charge for travel. At this point, I was assuming that it would be more remote-based and that it would be, you know, sort of virtual meetings or technical assistance. I'm fine coming out occasionally like this to present and talk about the, you know, a little bit of community interest.
Sure. We could certainly though communicate primarily by email, telephone. We could certainly though communicate primarily by email, telephone, Zoom meeting kind of thing, to get us up and running and so forth. Don't you think that would be...
Yeah, and if it's an occasional in-person, you know, we can kind of feel it out and see, but if it, if it became the expectation I, you know, I'd miss.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Back there, John? Oh, no. Okay.
John, John is our superintendent of the Department of Public Works, so he's, he's...
So you got a list?
He would. Any other questions?
No, I'm good. So...
Good? Okay.
Exactly what I was looking for. Thanks, James.
Appreciate it.
If there is any follow-up, I'd be happy to...
Yes, we, we've got your email, we've got your phone number, and we've got your number. Thanks.
Thanks so much. You're welcome to stay, but I know we've got a long drive back.
I think I will head out, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Do we have any public comments for tonight? Anyone here? Yes. Step right forward and tell us who you are and why you're here.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Nikki Reed, and I am here about proposition, proposal one on the ballot in November.
And your name again is Nikki?
Nikki Reed, R-E-I-D.
R-E-I-D. Okay, good, thank you.
Um, so I want to talk a little bit about benefits of medical marijuana and the benefits that the, this proposal would have for the community. First of all, I'm a licensed substance abuse counselor. I spent six years working in a methadone clinic, and I saw firsthand the devastation that opiates did to people's lives. You know, people lost their homes, their families, it really just destroyed their entire world. And marijuana is a safe alternative to that, to treat pain. My husband had a spinal tumor about two years ago now, and it was so bad that he could barely walk to the mailbox, he couldn't play with my kids. And he had surgery, had it removed, and addiction runs in his family, so he was really concerned, we were really concerned about him staying, like taking the prescribed opiates afterwards for the recovery, but, you know, cut a big hole in his spine. He was in a lot of pain. So we got him some medical marijuana, and he was able to use that to treat his pain. And, you know, he's doing really well now. He loves taking the kids for walks, he can play in the backyard with them, and he just couldn't do that before. And I just want everyone to, like, I want all patients to have access to that, to have access to a safe medicine that can treat their pain, definitely that can, you know, help cancer patients with their nausea. And marijuana just has so many positive uses medically, and I think it would be a really big benefit for this community for people to have access to that locally so they didn't have to travel out of town to get it. And also, I'm glad that I happened to be here to hear that you were trying to get a grant writer because it will bring in a lot of money. Last year, every city got an average of $27,000 for every medical marijuana facility that they had. So that might solve some of your grant needs if you were able to have access to that money.
How, how did that happen? Because the research that I've looked at for a community our size, the money's nowhere near that much.
It comes from the federal government, based on all the taxes. I mean, you pay really a lot of money to go into a medical marijuana facility and shop. And so I guess I don't know the exact equation, but that was the average non-profit, was 27,000 per facility. Plus the licensing fees are $5,000 for each facility. And I don't know what your tax structure is, but, you know, we could probably tax it locally too. And that could, I think, bring in a lot of revenue for the city and create jobs for people. I'm not sure what your job market is like right now, if you need jobs or if you need employees more. But I think that it could be really beneficial for the community.
Would you want to speak to the comparison of recreational marijuana and medical marijuana? There's probably people who would like to hear what you have to say.
In what regards?
What's, what makes them different?
The licensing really makes it different, so...
What makes the actual marijuana different?
In order to be, so a rec store can have medical and recreational. And in order to be medical, it has to, like, now we have a state testing system, like it has to be lab-tested. I don't know how many labs we have in the state now, but there's a couple of them. And so all marijuana products that are sold through a marijuana provisioning center have to be, go through this testing and pass it. And some of it is labeled for medical use and some of it is labeled for recreational use. Sometimes the products are very, very similar or even the same, but they came from different batches and they're labeled differently and sold differently. And only people with a medical marijuana license can buy the medical side of it, and then anyone over the age of 18 can buy the recreational side of it. But like a medical patient, if there is something on the rec side they wanted, they can still purchase that and have access to it.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
I do. The $5,000 permit fee, that's through the state, correct? Not through the local government?
Most of that comes back to the local cities.
But it's charged by the state is what I think what he's asking.
Right, it's charged by the state. And how do the cities recoup that permit fee or do they have to set special ordinances or fee structures to get that remitted back to them?
You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but I think our lawyer has attempted to reach out, and if they haven't, they will soon, and they can definitely explain that to you. Finance isn't my, my key area.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one, is it prescribed medical marijuana?
No, the way that it was set up in the initial law is you have to go to a, a doctor and have them like assign you a card. You have to take your paperwork in, like my mom has a card. And she had a total like shoulder replacement, so she took in all her paperwork from the hospital and from the replacement, the shoulder repair, whatever it was. And then a doctor signs off on it and the state sends you a card, and then you take the card in and are able to purchase with that. I would really like to see it get to the point where we had actual doctors who were prescribing specific strains for specific conditions. I think that's one of the biggest things that's lacking right now, but hopefully we're moving in the right direction there.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Are you up?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. Any other public comments? And we'll move then to communications. I think Devin has some.
Coming from Kelly Wilson, says, Dear Bob, I am finding it extremely difficult to attend planning commission meetings since I am spending increasing amounts of time at the lake. Since attending via Zoom is no longer an option, I feel I have no option but to rewind. This is a step I take with much regret because I have enjoyed being part of this exceptionally talented group. Sincerely, Kelly. And that's all I have.
Moving on then to mayor and department head reports. John, do you have any?
Public work stuff is going on just like normal. I don't have any special projects other than briefing on the water tower. Just wanted to go over colors. Councilman Lambert wanted me to bring everybody up to speed where we're at. I think that there's a consensus on what we want to do. This is the existing picture of the tower. This is a tower that Dixon Engineering sent me with painted legs in the bottom of the bowl. Ours does not have the catwalk around it, but if that's what we would like to do, we can decide tonight. I don't have a motion or anything, so I don't know. I didn't know how formal or informal it was to make a decision on, this here is at the Chrysler Proving Grounds in Chelsea, that tower there, and this is ours.
Your recommendation was to have a darker color.
Yes, where the, where the mildew was on the bottom of ours, on the bowl. So my only thing was is just to have like a dark navy blue or something there. If you guys want the legs done, from that point down to the ground, a loose estimate, $3,000 to $5,000 extra, then paint, painting them white due to the nature of the pigments. That's about all I can, so if you want to go with, you know, from the bottom of the bowl down, one solid color, and then the top white with the same matching City of Perry logo, not the logo but the current, yeah. It would look just like it is now, but it would be a dark blue, kind of centered in between the top.
The bowl itself would be white, bottom would be dark.
A dark blue.
And then Perry would be dark blue to match the bottom.
Yeah, would match the bottom.
And if you want to do the legs, that's an additional charge of $3,000 to $5,000.
Yeah, the, just doing the bottom where the mildew is, all it's doing is just highlighting it, yes.
Did the legs get discolored on, on the tower this time?
No.
So we could just do a dark underneath the bowl to help cover up that mildew that happened.
Yep, and I have no objection to it either way.
But then do white legs, white bowl, dark lettering, City of Perry, along the same lines of what's there but up a little higher.
Right.
On the bowl.
Yes.
What are your thoughts, everybody?
The consensus is to stick with just simple City of Perry then on the floor.
I believe so, and currently the way that it is right on here, just change the color, it'll be raised a little bit to make it look right as it is up there.
We did pass around a calendar that had lots of different water tower painted in different colors, different ways. And we passed that around, some people wanted to go with an additional color, you know, in there just to pizzazz it up a little bit. And Larry even suggested maybe putting the sign, the City of Perry sign on the bowl of the water tower. Dory kind of wanted to go with something red, white, and blue-ish, you know, more patriotic. So we had lots of input, lots of different things, but the majority of people whose comments I saw on the paperwork that went around with the calendar were saying, yeah, let's do dark blue, like a shiny navy dark blue and match the lettering to that. So any input along that lines? Every time we add a different color, it's money.
Well, yeah, and if we change it after the specs and the bids have come back, it'll be changeable, but...
It'll cost more.
It'll dial it up. So if you want the leg, you know, from the bottom of the bowl all the way to the ground, I can tell them to spec that.
Well, that was my, that was my input. Why don't we just do that same color all the way to the ground? My, knowing now that it's $3,000 to $5,000 to do that, I would say, no, I think white legs are just fine.
I like that, yeah, but yeah, I don't think we need to spend...
Yeah, I don't think we need to spend extra money just to...
Okay.
Well, birds probably perch.
Birds perch, probably. Yeah, so it would be messier and a half dark. Yeah, you're right.
Not stand out as much.
Yeah.
So now I have a phone meeting with him to tell him the colors and so we're okay with the bottom of the bowl being a dark blue? I don't know the...
The navy, but dark blue, yeah.
Yeah, dark navy blue, and then the lettering to match.
And the rest of that white.
And the rest of it will be white.
Everybody good at that?
Yep.
And they were good?
Okay.
Can I ask a, just a curious question? It used to be red 100 years ago, and white from the air, a white water tower is hard to spot. I fly with my brother sometimes, and we look for water towers to kind of locate, but and the red water tower is easy to see, white.
I can answer that at least, because I, I can answer that because I was mayor when we had the water tower painted. The painters told us that red was the very worst color that you could paint a water tower because it rusts fastest. That's why it's light blue now instead of red.
Well, I'm just curious why, why we went from a very red to...
That's exactly why we did it.
To an invisible white.
What color is the rub? Is that gray or is it painted?
It's like that baby blue, but it's healing off.
But what's it going to be painted when it's painted?
White.
Oh, okay. Anybody else got a question? Anything for John? John, thank you very much from all of us and from the city residents who have been just so excited about the scarecrows that DPW put up along Main Street. Thank you. That's what I thought they were going to say.
We appreciate it. Everybody did a lot of work. We just did the, put the finals on.
You know, when the gentleman, James, was talking about running, driving up and downtown, he goes, yeah, he goes, I was driving up and downtown and I thought, oh, here comes all the hacker, all these people tied to the post, you know, I thought I was going to say something about all the scarecrows. Here we go.
I do have a few reports, so I'll just work down my list here. Our appreciation dinner for employees, past employees, elected officials, did not happen last year because of COVID restrictions. We had said, well, as the restrictions get removed, perhaps we could do an appreciation dinner in the spring. Well, that didn't happen either. Well, now we're rolling up to holiday time again. So I asked Shirley about working on details for a dinner, because it appears that the restrictions are released enough that we can do a dinner, an appreciation dinner, and I understand that in the past it's been the first Friday, is that right? The first Friday evening of December. So Shirley has contacted Brookshire in Williamson and reserved the big room there for the first Friday of December for our appreciation dinner. She's working on the details for dinner buffet as opposed to individual plate order, you know, however, whatever's going to cost less. And once the cost is known, then she'll get me that and I'll bring it back to you guys to decide for sure, but that's in the works. There is a Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award Program that came across my desk through the email that awards people who serve in any way a volunteer, someone who is, for example, a councilperson here doesn't get paid a huge salary, so they're basically a volunteer, because I checked with them to see at what point are they a volunteer or not. He said pretty much everybody here is a volunteer. So I have, on my own volition, nominated Larry Lambert for his numerous contributions of time and expertise, in particular to the Finance and Ordinance Committee for this award, and Leland Scott, who has helped to enforce codified ordinances without pay for years. So I've submitted their names, and hopefully they will receive some recognition. I don't know if it will be the big money or not, but you've been nominated for an award.
Thank you.
Excellent choices.
Good choice, definitely.
I have also gotten Dory to help me create a flyer to ask for donations to our parks and to the McQueen House Maintenance, which is the city's responsibility for maintenance of the building. And I just want to make sure the council is okay with me doing this fundraising. It would go, in the case of the Parks Committee, into that. Joanne, do I call it an account or a fund? The Parks Fund?
We have a park fund and we have a McQueen fund.
So it would go in the appropriate fund, it would be a tax deductible contribution. City would provide the necessary documentation for that. Because of the way that both of those funds, each of those funds are set up now, those monies will accrue. So if somebody wanted to give $20 now and $20 a year for the next 20 years, that turns out to be a nice chunk of change. So what are your comments? What are your thoughts?
That's a great idea.
I agree.
Okay, I'll go with that. All righty then. I'm, in talking with Devin and with Dory, we've talked about emailing this to as many places as we can email to avoid postage, handing out, personal emailing. So if any of you want to send them to your friends or relatives or whomever you think might be interested in making a donation, you could certainly do that too. So when we email it, we'll email it to you and then you can forward it on to anybody you might think is appropriate. But I think it's a good way to get interest going and I think it shows people that may not even know that we have these facilities, that we have them and they need some money.
You probably plan on putting it at Carl's as well?
Yeah, we'll put it up on the board at Carl's. We'll see if we can get other places to post it or have them available to hand out or something along that line. What do you think? So any ideas you have for distribution, let me know. That would be appreciated. We had one open seat on the Planning Commission. One of them now I will be appointing tonight. I did have a text from Mary Plaman tonight while I was grabbing a bite to eat before I came for the meeting. She is volunteering to serve on the Planning Commission. But I'll say, if anybody else is interested, we now have Kelly's open seat. We need to fill that seat. And we'll give consideration to anybody that's interested in stepping forward for that. The other bit of information I wanted to share with you is concerning our ARPA reporting. When we approved this money that we're going to get to be used for the water tower, we were told at that point that we had to do our first reporting by October 30th of 2021. We got an email October 1st that said our first reporting has now been changed to April 30th of 2022.
2020.
So, but we do have our money, our first tranche, I think they call that, has been deposited, correct, treasurer? So we do have half of our 209,000 in the bank, or 218,000. I think that's everything I had to report on. Any questions about all that stuff? If not, I'll turn loose the treasurer on her orderly budget comparison. Well, no, I can't do that yet because she's on the agenda, right? Stay seated because it's not time for you yet.
I have a question. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
John, are you here to do a report?
Yes, I talk about COVID money.
We'll have you do that right now. That's a good intro to that.
Yes, actually, I have, there's two parts to this report. In our meetings in September, I asked several elected officials and citizens to come and ask what should we use their COVID money for? A little background on that. The county is receiving about 13,700,000 for this year and next year. Actually, there's, we'll receive more money. A lot of this money has not been dispersed or has it been told how it's going to be dispersed. But with our situation and what I've learned is that we have to find places for that money. I'm sure that we can be creative enough to find some places in the county to spend it, but 13.7 million dollars is a lot of money to try to spend. So we've asked for suggestions. Of course, suggestions are along the areas of, we spent a lot of money in health. We hired a lot of extra people. Actually, we brought back a lot of retired health officials from our county that worked part-time during COVID. Again, it was a lot of money, but we did that. We also have expended monies for other things in government. We can use it for sanitary drains. That's like Perry Drain Number Two, which I think we dump in the, in the spring. We take our lagoon water and we discharge it. We can do drains under roads, typical drains. We can do water towers, sewer systems, lagoons, those types of things we can use this money for. Charitable organizations we can use this money for. And there's probably going, I'm sure that's not, the list that's out now will expand somewhat. I know a lot of communities have said, well, we're having a tough time figuring out what we're going to do. Some of the, some of the ideas, Sue was there along with Mark Fox from the township, Perry Township, but I'll go over some of these things. Guy Hubbard came, our fire chief, and he was representing the 13 fire departments. And he asked for $90,000 for each department, three of them. That's 1.7 million. That would service all the people in Chilwase County. Those 13 departments cover Chilwase, Chilwase County. That has been, a lot of counties have done that for their departments. Ingram County is one of them. Judge Lestraaco came and said, we have a, we have a committee that's the courthouse committee. If they became a charitable trust, we could donate money to that charitable trust for the maintenance of the historical courthouse. And he suggested 3.5 billion, but, okay, that's, I mean, but he's a real proponent of the courthouse. But that's something that possibly could be done. Moving to the back page. Casey Glass from Burns Township, broadband. And I, I will go into the second part of my discussion tonight with what he would like to know, so I'll skip over that for the time being. Sue Hammond, drinking water, City of Perry, water tower. Could I have to come up with the City of Perry and the Perry Township and together and everything? May have to come up with $350,000 for a match. I'm sure, I'm, I'm very interested in those types of activities. Encroata has projects also, Burns, I mean Byron, Durant. A lot of times they're working on grants and they need seed money. Or if the money has been okay, collected, and everybody's got their money, maybe something extra. So we might do that on a per capita basis. We'll have to put some numbers to that, but that's certainly a suggestion that commissioners were very interested.
Could I just jump in there for a minute, just clarifying? The $350,000 is the estimated cost for the refurbishment and painting of the water tower.
I got you.
Yep. We, we have our ARPA money to throw at that, but we still need another 150,000 dollars to cover the rest of it. Right now, our plan is to take out a loan for over and above what we have, which is 109,000, take out a loan for the balance, and then when we get our other ARPA money, we'll put that directly on the loan, but we'll still have to pay that 130,000 dollars. The township and city project is a 5.7 million dollar project. Larry went with me for that. And Mark Fox was there. And that would be to extend water lines into Perry Township's industrial park. So, yes, I just wanted to clarify that.
All those types of projects are funded, yes. Also, the Drain Commissioner and the Road Commissioner got together and they said they would like to do with COVID, with COVID money, two drain projects with roads in each township. There are 16 townships, that'd be 32 projects. Going under roads can cost $5,000 with a drain, or it can cost $50,000 with a drain. Those, of course, if that happens, they certainly wouldn't be all completed in one year, but they would take a while to do. That is something that would benefit all the taxpayers. And then vice versa, projects for water sewer, that, that helps all the people of Chilwase County too. I mean, there's, if all the entities that have water and sewer have something for the Board of Commissioners to look at, then that certainly takes in an awful great deal of the county, the county population. Again, we could use money for that. Okay, let me look down here. Oh. Right now, the Humane Society is embarking on a fundraising project, project to expand their facility. Presently, we have a contractual arrangement, county, for the county dog ward, take, take the animals there. We've had that now, I think, for, oh, eight, 10 years now. It's worked out very well. We would certainly are interested in helping with that project. I mean, when we had our own dog kennels and, and employees, that was about a $750,000 operation per year. And that's, that's quite a while ago now. Today, besides paying the wages for the dog catchers, so to speak, we pay the Humane Society about 25,000 a year. So I mean, it's considerable savings. So anything that we can enhance their operation and their logistics really benefits the taxpayers of Chilwase County. The YMCA came and talked about, they'd like a community center. They've been talking about a community center for quite some time, and of course, if located in the Wausau, Encroata area. But they, they, they're a charitable organization, so we'll take a look at those things. On the county level, quite frankly, the tax revenues have come in very well over the last several, last few years. We have not taken any money from the Tax Linkhood Fund the last two years, nor will we this year. We have amassed quite a savings account in the Tax Linkhood. Probably by the end of this year, about 17 to 18 million dollars. And normally, those, that kind of monies is our bank, so we don't borrow money, but also, it's also monies for big projects. A big project that we're looking for at, and we've been discussing for quite some time, is the new veterans building. And we are in negotiations, and I think our next meeting is the finance meeting, which I chair, we will be approving that land purchase for that activity. And that will be right on Main Street in Encroata, right near the Commissioner Chambers. And that would probably, most likely, hasn't been decided, a three-story building similar to the Commissioners Chambers now, and the, and the veterans would be on the bottom floor, so that would work out really well.
So this is administrative offices?
Yes, yeah. So we're all, we're looking for ideas to spend some money. Again, we'll be having other meetings as we progress through the year, get some numbers. We have people working on numbers now for drains and then water sewers, activity. Soon as your first round of grants and writing go out, I need to know what you're going to need dollar-wise, so, yeah. There's a big, now, second part, I'll move quickly as possible. I went to the Michigan Association of County Fall Convention. Cindy Garber went along as the Commissioner. Tracy Bublitz, our Finance Director, went. And one of the big areas of discussion that lasted all afternoon was broadband. Broadband and wireless things, wireless, cable, fiber, all those types of activities. Last year, the federal government auctioned off a new bandwidth for rural areas. And Perry, I, those counties considered rural, okay? Well, a lot of the big boys bought up those wavelengths and they're sitting on it because they're the ones who have cable, towers, satellites. Fiber, they don't want a lot of expansion with fiber because it would be a competition to them, I mean, unless they owned it, of course. I didn't realize, but fiber is the best way to go for resolution, storms, all sorts of things that happen. One of the big questions, okay, you put this fiber in the ground, in 10 years, it's obsolete. And the gentleman explained, no, in that fiber, there's 144 fiber optic cables in one of the big, the cable. Two of those can do all of Michigan, all of Michigan. Lots of capacity. Okay, then the question was, what are you doing now? Now, this group is called the Highline Group. They're out of Georgia and they have what we call deep pockets. They bid along with, along with power companies in northern Michigan and the UP to bring broadband to the UP and basically north, north of Midland. And they secured most of those contracts. They can put in broadband fiber that's 75,000 in the ground or 25,000 on the poles if they can hook up an average of five to six houses per mile. Well, I looked at their map and what they're doing. The UP in northern Michigan are going to have 5G before we even get off the ground. Because our area has been purchased by all the big networks and they're sitting on it. Now, the question was, why don't they get active? Well, they put the low bid in to bring broadband to the country around Perry or Perry, and they're, they're not going to do anything. They're going to pay the fines. They can afford to pay the fines better than they can have, than they want competition. Well, that's starting to change. Congress has made some new resolutions, some new rules, and if they don't get off their seats, they're going to have to do something. But actually, those companies don't want to have anything to do basically outside of cities. And like in Perry here, my broadband is excellent through TDS. Even, oh, a mile from my house and it's, instead of 5G, it's 1G. I mean, that's all over. Casey Glass from Burns, Burns said, down there, they're, they're lucky if they get anything. Sometimes we have to print out a piece of paper on the computer, it takes an hour, sort of, just like that. Burns Township asked a company to come in and say to them, what would it cost to be broadband in all of Bernstein Township, a village of Byron, two, it would cost approximately two and a half million dollars. What this group, Highline, does, they partner with like people like Daystar to give them more money, do more. They would even partnership with like TDS in Perry. Charter, I mean, that's not charter anymore, but they, they have all sorts of funding mechanisms to do the work. By doing northern Michigan and the UP, they secured grants from federal of 383 million dollars to help on those projects. So this is a combination of private enterprise, public money. We now have a office, Governor, to establish an office for broadband to try to coordinate activities. But when we suggested that we do all of Chilwase County, they're coming. And of course, COVID money can be used for this activity. Of course, it's a huge chunk of change to do all of Chilwase County. But if it helps with filling gaps, maybe that's what we should do. Or if somebody does make a, a deal to get things done, maybe we fund 5% of everything in, you know, the four, the four townships in the bottom part of the county? I mean, there's all sorts of avenues and they're very interested in coming to Chilwase County. It's, 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 there's a lot in depth. I can, I filled a notepad of stuff. If we want to talk about it any more, I can probably get into some of the technical stuff. But it's, it's fascinating. And it's kind of sad that maybe we're the last type of a community around us or the country around us to get 5G totally because we were between the Flit and the Lansing, you know, population centers and, yeah, so on and so forth. But either way, I just wanted to introduce you to all that. I'll be going to more meetings on that at the state level and looking for funding sources too.
So should we be in touch with details on what we proposed at the meeting that we attended? Or do you have the information we need for now?
We have the information for now. What I have to do is get a consensus from the Board of Commissioners that these are areas that you want to go into. And a typical question among us was, well, we really got to understand exactly what we can spend money on. We got to have plans in place by 2020. We got to have plans in place by 2024, and we got to have it spent by 2026. That is a lot of money to try to figure out what to do with. Even if we did, you know, 32 drain crossings on roads, I mean, 20, say, average of $20,000, I mean, that's only $640,000.
We could help you with about $6 million.
Yeah, yeah.
We could get it done.
John, I do have a question about that also. So how likely is the board looking at, are they looking more at large projects or helping small communities with small amounts, small request amounts?
Yes, small requests would be fine. And bigger, like the Perry Township, City of Perry, Water Tower, yes, all projects because some, we have Waso's 15,000 people, Perry's 2,000 people, Duran's like 4,500. I mean, there's, there's areas of need all through that. We try to balance maybe on a per capita, but like if this water sewer project goes, then you have the township, Village Morris, City of Perry, is a population center. Then we might, I mean, there's, there's avenues of all that. One of, one of the things, one of the speakers who spoke at this meeting was from Oakland County, and Wayne County was there too. And they, they hired a firm named Guide House to make sure they applied correctly, spent their money correctly, and reported what they spent correctly. Now, Guide House, an organization, you know, just, you know, just like the gentleman here earlier, they're an expert in the area, they helped, they helped the IRS and the Congress formulate the rules. So, I mean, things will change. They will, there will be more things that'll be, that'll be available to do. Also, I think '26 is, for a lot of activity, is pretty quick. I mean, the government, some of this stuff takes one or two years to get planned out, and then to find enough labor to do it. If they have any type of an infrastructure bill this, this, this year or next, a lot of those projects might be three, four years down the road because there's not enough capacity to do it.
Well, there's might be material shortages or work shortages. So certainly that type of stuff, so, might, we might see some changes there.
So I'm, I'm pushing real hard to get some things ironed out as to what we, what we would do, how we could give money to communities and what form, right away, so we can get things. So I, I hope to have something, I don't know if I will, I hope to have something by Christmas.
Okay, great.
I have a question. I noticed on your list of wants and needs and ideas for the county to spend their money on, that there was nothing mentioned about the jail. And that we, I remember seeing the videos and stuff that were brought by those.
Yes, that has come up.
That came up and that it's such poor condition. Here's my, usually you don't bring stuff up unless you have a solution. Why don't you donate the jail to the animal control? The conditions are bad, but they're for animals, you know? You don't have to have the same condition to contain the animals that you do people. And then build yourself a new jail.
The jail word is, again, we all know infrastructure that's in the ground. The power's there, the water's there, the sewer's there, the roads are there, it's slow traffic, it's next to the courthouse. There's been a lot of discussion that you take off the back part of the jail. The county owns all the way to the next street. And basically, the jail area, kitchen area, all those areas would be brand new, modernistic, probably in a pod like they talked about earlier. And that, the jail that faces, closest to Chiawas Street, which is Main Street of Carana, that would be renovated and renovated for better offices, turnout room, Sally Port, Sally Port is where prisoners can be transported from the trials that'll be going on at the courthouse, lunchtime, they can come back and meet with their attorney in a, in a secured area, not so much in the jail area, there's private rooms. There's a lot of discussion going on about that activity. I'm not sure where that's all going to go, but again, a lot of this money cannot be used for that activity. But we have, like I said earlier, we have quite a savings account. So sometimes you would fund this area that you normally would fund, but you can't supplant tax money.
Right.
Yeah. But if it's savings money, and it's in your checkbook, so to speak, there might be some wiggle there. Yeah, that, that's, that's been discussed too. And again, we have a couple of companies that have come in and talked to us about that.
Well, thank you, John, for your report. We appreciate that.
Real quick question, John.
Yes.
Just to clarify for me, we will, may know something in December about disbursements and, and awards?
What I'm thinking is, well, if the Board of Commissioners wish to do that type of a program, if they wish to do that type of a program, then the monies are there. And then, you know, between now and Christmas, I would hope each Commissioner would go into their district and talk to those people who have water sewer systems and say, look, what have you got to do? Bring it back. All the Commissioners touch things that have water and sewer. And I think there's three Commissioners basically touch Waso, two Commissioners touched Carana, two are pretty close to Duran, a couple, I mean, were close by here. I mean, there's a lot of touching of boundaries, so. But well, but keep in mind, we're looking for some, that would certainly enhance everybody's position in the county.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Moving on to committee reports, we'd like to go first.
I want to be pretty quick.
All right.
I apologize if I did not get the minutes typed up mainly because my wife was sick this week and it fell on me.
Oh, sorry you heard that. Oh, my gosh.
But we did have a parks meeting this past, last week? Last week or Tuesday, anyways?
Oh, we could go.
Just a few days ago.
Yeah.
And I know one of my members had been coming, started a Facebook group for us, for parks, and I told her to contact the city about this, so I'll take that with me to work and scan it.
There you go.
And put it on that page.
Okay.
I haven't been on, seen the page because I don't go on Facebook very much. Our equipment that council approved to purchase is still on schedule to maybe November, maybe. It's somewhere either in a shipping container on its way here or sitting in a shipping container somewhere, we don't know.
In the ocean.
They say it's still going to be on schedule for end of November. Our benches are here, with the city has possession of them. I haven't had a chance to talk to John about it, but the consensus in the committee was to get those laid out, get them installed as soon as possible. And then, once the equipment comes, we'll decide what the weather is, apart from wait till spring out of those. So, that's it.
Okay. What other committee would like a report?
Business Affairs and Technology, I apologize for not getting the packet earlier this week, but you also should have a copy of what the work group has consented on right now for our mocked-up look at the new homepage for the website. Guess the keys are that a number of the things will be very visible, click buttons that will guide you to more detail. We've reduced significantly the number of dropdowns that are across the top, top of the page, trying to avoid any redundancy between information on the dropdowns and information on the buttons. Basically trying to significantly de-content and clean up the homepage. So what Shoemaker Group is working now on the next tier, which they call Phase Two, which is to start to put some structure behind this. I call it the framework, if you will, of a website that will actually then hang the detailed pages and things behind that. They claim in an earlier email today they're slightly behind schedule, but they do anticipate hopefully by the end of this week, having the Phase Two portion done. We've been working with Devin and Dory and the staff to begin to look at our current website, or they have already begun looking at our current website content and saying some things that we don't want to transfer, to get those offlighted and offloaded and archived to hard drive so we don't lose it, but we're not going to pay Shoemaker to transfer, you know, antiquated material, if you will, and also to work at cleaning up the, the individual pages so that when you click on yard waste in here, you get just yard waste information. You click on DPW information, you'll get an overview of DPW. So that's, we're still.
I have one question for you there, just on the buttons there you have, so like Park and Rec.
Right.
Is that expandable? So if we could provide a show about the parks, because we're working on in our committee that George Dunn's compass course or whatever that's going to be exactly. We could add that, once we figure it out, get a finance, we could add that to that?
Right, exactly. What it will be right now, and so the quicker the better would be right now, correct me, Devin or anyone else, Mindy, would be that basically the park and rec information that's on our website today, we'd get, for all intents and purposes, transferred to that, that button.
Do we have to have a placeholder saying that we're going to do, because I have, I don't have it with me. I could give you what that's going to be called, that, it's not the Geocast, but what we have evolved that into, you know, as a, I can't remember what.
I would be concerned about the delay.
Okay.
I, I was, at this point, all the things that you don't see that's currently on the website, we've given a whole list to move, and I would think we're a couple weeks out on identifying what they moved and what we would want to actually still condense there. For example, like he was talking about the working yard waste. So if you need a moment, I think you have a moment to get us that and to put it in there, would you agree?
I would agree. We should put it in.
Put it in as a placeholder, and then it's there, once we have all the details, we can do, somebody can plug it into that placeholder.
Right.
It's my understanding that I keep calling these buttons, like everybody else calls them buttons, but they're actually just links. It's just, it's identified and kind of singled out a little bit. So I don't think we have to have a placeholder.
Okay.
I mean, we can ask that question and get with you sooner than later, if that would be the case, but.
The last, just, the last discussion we had was, was maybe a URL code, sorry, URL code, that you could snap a picture of, and it'll give you information, and it should go to the website, and that would give you your first clue or go whatever you're going to. Then at each place, you would have another URL code that gives you the next one to go to and so on, or to decipher the codes.
If that level of detail, we're probably, like Devin indicated, we're a few weeks away now.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, we're not, oh, sorry, that train left, you can't do that anymore.
That's why I want to try to bring in here, you know, at least once in a month, kind of the stat of where we're at. But we're, are in fact, moving forward and what Devin indicated, they've already got another layer of information from what Devin and Dory and the work group did to start, you know, putting the framework behind this homepage.
I've got a question also. First of all, everybody involved did a great job. I love to look at this, and I believe our community will like the, I mean, the same. I'm not technically savvy also. I believe this is a toolbar, community officials, departments. Under that is a saying about COVID. Is that a banner type thing? Is that, we'll move so that we can add?
It will, but it can be changed.
It can be changed, sure. Because I think that would be a great place, but we need community members to be involved.
And then we can put it in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, between, between that, that banner and the two sections down here that are expandable, these are just examples in there, these may grow to be four or five items. The overall theme, I think, we're trying to get is to simplify the homepage and de-content it as much as possible to be able to, and then direct people to where they want to go for individual and bits of information.
And if they can't find where they want to go in any of these links, that last one says I want to, so when you click on that, it's, it gives you other options, what, what you can do.
Okay, just a real quick update on the financing ordinance. And we're going to talk later in the agenda about some items that the Finance and Ordinance Committee is set, ready to bring forward, hopefully for some decisions. And just stay tuned after these, there'll be another group, but hopefully for the next meeting, we'll take another cut of work that the ordinance group has been doing. That's about ready to go to Justin English for his attorney insight, if you will, and hopefully we'll have that here next time.
Mindy, have you got a report or something you want to talk about?
Well, personnel back together, as you asked, and hopefully you're good with the changes that they made, and have all that in your packet. That was really good input as far as recommendations, that the code enforcement officer will have like a smartphone, things to identify that person going around, things like that. Suggestions are in there, and we determined a pay rate.
So. And we came up with the outline of what the job requirements are.
Yes. And all that is in your packet as well. There really wasn't a lot of changes from what you were presented before in the, in the job description, but I think some really good changes, positive changes.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Let's move on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I will approve the bills as presented and the payment be authorized.
Second? It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy to approve the bills as presented and authorize payment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We have no old business on our agenda, so we'll move into new business. And the first item is first quarter budget comparison and possible amendments.
All right, guys, you should have a copy of your first quarter budget amendment. And to that, there is a loose page that looks similar to this. That. Did you, okay. So, anyway. So normally, when it comes to the first quarter budget comparison, we normally don't have any amendments because we're just getting started. And so in this quarter, we have just three amendments. And most of these are housekeeping. The first one is a contribution to the McQueen Fund. We have generated a fund, we have created a fund now, so that in general fund, all the money that's budgeted, if it's not used, it goes back to general fund. So in that same case, whatever's in the, in the fund balance for the McQueen Fund, if it doesn't get used, it stays with the McQueen Fund, which is contributions from us, donations, revenues, when people want to contribute money, if they do contribute funds to the McQueen House, it's going to stay with that project. It won't be deposited back into general funded out, it's going to stay at the McQueen House.
Yeah, and that was created in the passing of the new budget.
Yes.
It was agreed to create that.
And we had $7,000, I want to say $7,600 that was originally budgeted for the McQueen Fund. And to date, all of that has been spent except for $9.65. So I'm requesting that we do another contribution to the McQueen House for $5,000. That will hopefully, anything else that needs to be done, a broken window, a tree needs to be trimmed, plants in the spring, whatever, that money. to be trimmed, plants in the spring, whatever, that money will be there. So I'm requesting a budget amendment, line item number 101923000965600, the name of that line item is contribution to the McQueen Fund, and the amount is an increase of $5,000, and the original budget was zero, and so we're going to, the new contribution is going to be $5,000 total, and that's going to be coming from general fund to the McQueen House. So our new general total is $1,425,839, and you can see that adjustment on page six. The second two adjustments are totally my fault, I got excited because this is the water fund, and we are at the end of a 50-year drain, or a water bond payment, it's a payoff. The interest is in April, and the principal and the other interest, six months later, is in October, and I got the two dates confused, that I thought in April, we'd have the bond, principal, and interest paid off, and so I didn't put it in the budget, because we were going to have it paid off, while the dates were exactly switched. So we have a payment that needs to come out of the water fund that's not in our budget, so I'm asking for those to be in, put in the budget. The first one is a water fund, 591549000991100, this is the 1982 bond principal payment for $30,000. This amount is going to come out of fund balance, and it was originally budgeted zero, so the new budget total is $30,000. The second entry that I'm requesting a budget amendment for, line item 591549000996100, 1982 bond interest payment, and that's $1,500 going to be paid out of fund balance, the original line item was zero, so the new line item is going to be $1,500. And so our water fund budget is going to be $775,532. Now, because our year-end has not closed yet, we're waiting for the auditors and the auditor's journal entries, this report looks a little different, because it's not actually a budget report, it's a revenue and expenditure report, which has the same amount of information. Megan put this together, I think she did a great job, and on the very last, the very, very last page, it says, total revenues of funds, total expenditures, this is at the very bottom of the page, on the, page 13, and so the net of revenue and expenditure, negative $451,281, and that looks really scary, and a little bit takes your breath away at first when you see that amount. This is general fund, we know we spent, that we are going to spend out our general fund by 190-some thousand. This also includes highway major, highway local. Because at the time we did the budget, the paving had not been, the big paving projects had not been done in a highway major or highway local, and so what we had to do was we had to put that money in our new budget. So what happened is, the weather cleared, they got the, the guys freed up, we got the project done, it was done June 27th, was the last, was the date it was done and paid for, and so this budget has all that paving, I believe it's, I'm going to say $180-some-thousand with the paving that was actually done last year in this year's budget. So the expenses are going to be overstated, extremely overstated, so of that $451,000, part of that is not going to be spent, I mean, like, $180,000 of it's not going to be spent. So if you fast forward to this loose page, this gives you the four, at the very top, it gives you the negative $451,000 that we're looking at, these are the balances, the cash balances in the accounts. First one is general, $523,788. If we spend 193, the balance that we're going to have is still $329,000, and it goes right on down the line, surplus, 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 and so with, even with the spending of the $451,000, we're still going to have $1,787,000. That's it. Everything gets, comes in that we're going to get, and everything gets spent that we've budgeted to spend, which never happens. And this has budgeted the building, water sewer connections that we've had, I think last year's budget I put in two, because I didn't want to, you know, overstimulate what money was we were going to have coming in, but in fact, we've had 14. I budgeted for two, we've actually taken in 14. So, you know, there's other things that can cause the revenues to go up. I think with all the 14 new houses, our taxable value is going to be more, much more, next year, when all these new houses get added to it, so it'll be more revenues coming in next year, so.
Couldn't I just step back to the, the change, the amendment to the budget, and just clarify, that that $30,000 principal payment that we will make-
Yes.
-will pay off-
That's the last one, yes.
1982 bond.
And so in, in 2027, in my long-term debt schedule, 2027 is going to be the last building lease payment for the $55,000 a year for the building rent, which will free up $55,000 in general fund that we are not going to have to come out of, and in the water fund, we are going to have $30,000, $32,000 more a year that's not going to be spent, because we have the bonds all paid off.
That's part of the discussion we have, we're talking about a potential loan for the water tower renovation, and where will the funds come from to make that loan payment? So just to reiterate what Sue said, then this 32,000 will be, is going to be paid off, will be paid off in September, October this year.
It's paid off now, October, yeah, we just did the, we just did the-
Okay.
-the payment, so.
So the loan that we would take out to make up the difference between our ARPA money and what we will need to pay for the water tower, basically, is an extension of money that was paid here, we're going to be paying there.
And looking at that, we, totally what we're going to need to buy is like about $132,000, and depending on if they do that over 10 years, you know, seven years, five years, whatever, I mean, I think even at five years, our payment's going to be like $20,000, $22,000, $23,000 a year.
I do like John's idea, though, he brought up, why not finance it for 10 years, and then if we get money from the county, we can just pay it off.
Sure.
If we don't, then we don't have to make a huge payment, and if we have extra, we'll throw against it and pay it off earlier, but-
Like I said, you know, I had ten, from, when you're looking at a $30,000 a year payment for the bonds that we have now versus a $20,000, you know, so.
So, but anyway, I just wanted to clarify, that would be paid off.
And those two, I have a question, those two for the water fund, that's a fund, so the money that's in there stays in there, is secure, accumulates.
Sure, sure, yep, any extra money that we get in there for connection charges for all these new houses stays in the water, well, half water, half sewer.
So in a sense, one way to look at this, we have $30,000 annually that now stays in that fund.
Yep, exactly, so our, our water fund is going to be $30,000 to the good without doing anything, just because we don't have that expense to come out anymore.
Any more questions for Joanne? Anybody, anybody?
I move that we approve the first quarter budget amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Bob.
Awesome.
To approve the first quarter budget amendment as presented by the treasurer, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you, Joe. Let's move on then to our next topic, possible approval of proposed new code enforcement Mindy did give a report on personnel's feedback in regard to the information about the OEO, ordinance enforcement officer, and be careful when you say OEO in front of Joe, because it just makes your face go every time you say it. I think you all got copies of recommendations that the personnel committee had, is that right? Does anybody not have copies of that? Oh, is that, no, you don't have it? I thought I was going to say no.
Sorry, I have, I have.
So take, take whatever time you need to finish reviewing your information, and then if you have comments or questions, anybody feel free to just bring them up. Leland is here to speak to his involvement in this development as well, so if you have questions for him.
Yeah, we spent a lot of, just a comment, we spent a lot of time talking about what we should call a position, and I think as we go through the motion, we just need to modify the words that are there a little bit, we decided to call it an ordinance enforcement officer.
Correct.
We're back and forth, and I still struggle with all the discussion we've had here before, of calling it a code enforcement officer, but in reality, we defined the position to really look after codified zoning ordinances, not getting into building codes and, and other areas.
Yes, yes, thank you, Larry, for putting that out, I, I didn't see that.
I see one thing, just a question, so you have a magnetic sign or something to go on a vehicle, whose vehicle?
The ordinance enforcement officer's vehicle.
Personal vehicle.
That-
Is there a reimbursement for fuel and mileage?
We didn't put one in, no.
So there would not be?
Correct. And this might be vinyl, it might be magnetic, as it says here, Dory did talk to the great gazebo, who has made things like that for us in the past, and they are going more to the vinyl, simply because different types of cars have different contours in the doors, and the vinyl adjusts its shape easier than a flat magnetic sign, so.
F-250 like I do, it's all on.
There you go. So the, the vinyl is what they're recommending, and thus, the, maybe $50, the difference in the price, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought I had the prices, the estimates.
It's on the email, Mindy.
Yeah.
It's on there. $48, $50 for this plane or magnet.
There it is, okay.
Any other comments or questions? I move that we approve the Personnel Committee's recommendation to create an administrative part-time ordinance enforcement officer position, which will consist of a maximum of eight hours per week at $20 per hour, and amend the 21, 22 budget for the department number 101 entitled legislate, legislating with an increase of $5,900 to a line item number 702.005, ordinance enforcement officer, making the new budget total for this line item $5,900.
Second.
That's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy, we'll give it to her, since she was on it. As read, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. So we've created the position, we do have a possible first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number 356 regarding the title of the position, so since we were talking about that, why don't we move right into that? Larry, do you want to bring information to that?
Yep, I will kind of overview this, and then I'll begin a graphic reading through it. Basically, this ordinance, zoning ordinance, we already went through, and previously went through and approved the enforcement portion, which is 17.06, I believe, in the zoning ordinance, but with the position that we just created and the title associated with it, going back in to do some cleanup of the recently approved ordinance to be consistent with the new position we're creating, can I get that right?
Yeah.
Therefore, I move, any questions about it before I go through the reading? I move the zoning ordinance amendment number 356 regarding a change of title and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. City of Perry ordains, the City of Perry zoning ordinance number 356, section 17.06E12AB3 is amended, and below cited paragraph shall be inserted instead as follows. Section 17.06 enforcement E, the city council, the ordinance enforcement officer, or their duly authorized representative are hereby charged with the duty of enforcing the ordinance, and are hereby empowered to commence and pursue any and all necessary and appropriate actions and or proceedings in the district court or circuit court of Chiawassee County, Michigan, or any other court having jurisdiction to restrain and or prevent any noncompliance with or violation of any of the provisions of this ordinance, and to correct remedy and or abate the noncompliance or violation. And it is further provided that any person aggrieved or adversely affected by this noncompliance or violation may institute suit and or join the City of Perry in the suit abate the same. One, definitions, as used in this section, the authorized local official means a police officer or the ordinance enforcement officer who is hereby legally authorized to issue municipal civil infraction citations. Two, procedure to enforce zoning violations. Initial identification of a zoning ordinance violation, the ordinance enforcement officer shall meet with any individuals responsible for a violation of this ordinance to educate and inform them of the infraction. The alleged violator shall have a minimum of three business days to take corrective action, evidenced in writing with agreement of the ordinance enforcement officer to correct the alleged violation. If corrected timely, no further action will be taken. B, written notice, if violation is for and is not addressed based on the initial discussion with the ordinance enforcement officer, the ordinance enforcement officer will document the situation using the ordinance violation notification form approved by the city council for the City of Perry, and present a copy to the individual responsible for the infraction. The notification shall specify the violation and provide that the violation must be addressed within three business days or a municipal civil infraction citation may be issued. Three, municipal civil infraction. Any violation or failure to comply with the zoning requirements herein is a municipal civil infraction, and authorized local official, including the ordinance enforcement officer, may issue a municipal civil infraction citation upon personally witnessing the violation. The ordinance enforcement officer may also issue a citation to a person if, based upon investigation of complaint by someone who allegedly witnessed the person violate an ordinance, a violation of which is a municipal civil infraction, the official has the responsibility, cause to believe the person is responsible for the municipal civil infraction, and if the city attorney approves in writing the issuance of the citation. All of the other provisions of this ordinance, not inconsistent with the above amendments, remain in full force and effect. And thank you, Devin, for the streamlined approach as to re-reading the entire ordinance again, or that whole section. Basically, what changed in all of this was the title of the position.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I have a second.
It's been moved by Larry, seconded by Bob, that the zoning ordinance amendment three fifty-six regarding change of title, as read, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And still in relation to the same topic, we have, as a Personnel Committee and as an Ordinance Committee, talked with our current zoning administrator, Leland Scott, as to whether he would be willing to serve in this newly created position. And he, unless he's changed his mind.
Quick question.
Yep.
I didn't have that in front of me that he was reading. And I'd seen it a dozen times, but I don't, what I'm hearing is it's one and the same, zoning administrator and the code enforcing officer. Is that what you read?
The ordinance enforcement officer, there are two different functions.
Right.
The zoning administrator function remains as it has been in the past.
But a lot of what you read there sounded like the same person or was doing it, and that's why I'm asking. Because I don't remember it that way when I was reading over it before.
Okay. We're, I think we're embarking on a potential that in this particular case, it would be the same person.
I don't care about that. I'm talking about what you were reading. It sounded like you were having the zoning administrator and the code enforcement officer overlapping, doing the same job. And I just want to make sure that I understand that before I say yes to the mayor. Because that's, that's what I heard, and I don't remember it being that way when we talked about it earlier.
No, this really didn't, correct me if I didn't be able to clarify.
I answered that question.
You've got it here. In, in the, the reading of the zoning ordinance amendment, that's a zoning. That's not the codified ordinances.
Leland, when I asked that question, because I asked, what does, what does the ordinance enforcement officer do, and what is the difference? We wanted to.
One, the zoning.
Because they're in the zoning, it's in the zoning now. It's in the zoning ordinance. Those two administrators are in there. And I said, what's the difference? And I was explaining, and this is where you can correct me, and I think this is what you're asking.
I'm all ears.
Is, is that the zoning administrator will do all the permits in all of the above that you have always mastered.
Right.
But the ordinance enforcement, if there is a complaint, will be doing that on the zoning side and on the codified ordinances, that you will not have to go through all those steps of when there is a complaint and a problem, is, was my interpretation, what the difference is, is that you can do your job and cite the boundaries and interpret the law. You won't have to do the.
Well, we talked this, we talked this at death.
What do I want to say? It kind of, so each of them would be a penalty.
We talked this at death when you were writing this all up.
Right, now that.
But when you were reading it, it sounded like, okay, the zone, the zoning officer and the code enforcer have the same responsibilities.
Let me try to take one other piece of this, Leland, if it may help. We've got two different ordinances. What we did tonight was propose and have first reading on enforcement of zoning violations by the ordinance enforcement officer. Now, at the next meeting, when I commented we're working on some more changes, at the next meeting, all goes well, we'll have a first reading of changing the codified ordinances. It will read very, very similar to this. It will be the ordinance enforcement officer position enforcing codified ordinances as well.
There's supposed to be two separate positions, correct?
The zoning administrator will still process.
Will still be zoning administrator.
That's the zoning administrator. However, if there's a violation of a zoning ordinance, that's dealt with by the ordinance enforcement officer.
But if he didn't want to do both, there could be two different people.
Yep.
In that position. Is that what you're?
Well, no, that, and that's what we had all agreed on, that's what we had all talked about. It's just when you read it, it sounded like it was overlapping this, saying that the code enforcer was also going to do zoning violation. And that's what you just said.
He will do, he or she will do zoning violations.
Okay.
Which is a little different right now. You think of having the zoning administrator hat on, and that you're playing both roles for zoning today.
Right.
What we did is we said, okay, we're going to define it as an ordinance enforcement officer, which will encompass both zoning violations being addressed, as well as codified ordinance violations being addressed.
Can you report back to yourself?
Right.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Pretty much. I think so.
So are you still in favor of serving as the ordinance enforcement officer?
Yes.
I hereby appoint Leland Scott as the ordinance enforcement officer, and look to council for their approval.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Leland Scott as the City of Perry code in, excuse me, ordinance enforcement officer.
Second. It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Mindy to approve the appointment of Leland Scott as the ordinance enforcement officer. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for that. We also have an appointment for Nick Jones. He introduced himself earlier. I am appointing Nick Jones to the Planning Commission for a term expiring January, actually, this should say twenty twenty-two. Then if he's willing to continue to serve, we'll appoint him for another new, new three-year term.
I'm sorry, I, I thought you had asked him and he would agree to already extend it.
No, he didn't.
Okay.
So.
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Nick Jones to the Planning Commission for a term expiring January twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by Bob and seconded by Larry to approve the appointment of Nick Jones to the Planning Commission for the term expiring January twenty twenty-two. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our new business is possible approval of SEDP membership. We do have an SEDP membership. It doesn't expire for a few more months yet, but I had a communication from the SEDP asking if we would consider increasing our membership amount to what they call partner level, which is a thousand dollars. Right now, we're at a sustaining level of five hundred dollars. But they also asked, and when I say they, I mean Justin Horvath, is who, you know me. He also said this. I was talking with our board chair, Brian Marks, the other night, and we discussed how we thought it would be important to eventually have reps from the cities and townships of our four primary future development areas, Owasso, Corana, Durand, and Perry. So they're also asking if someone from the council or myself would be willing to serve on their board. So those two things are points of discussion. If you have discussion regarding it, we can certainly take action tonight, or if you feel you need more time to mull that over, we could move it to the next meeting, whatever you'd like.
What's your recommendation on moving Joy up in our contribution?
I think, we used to, the city used to contribute, what'd you tell me, Devin, four thousand? Four thousand a year. When we stepped, we did let that lapse, and then stepped back in this year, twenty twenty-one, to the sustaining level, their lowest level of membership, to get a feel for how much representation we would feel like we were getting, you know, what we getting for our dollars, kind of thing. I see that we've gotten quite a bit. We get communications, email typically, from the SEDP on a regular basis. And it gives information that's helpful to local businesses. It's helpful to municipalities. Its training is available. There's certainly other meetings that are available to meet great, so to speak, with the other municipalities and other businesses in the area. But they have really stepped up and stepped in to help us when we filled out the grant or applied for the grant for the money for the water extension out into Perry Township. Brent Jones, who's with the SEDP, he pretty much filled that out by himself, meeting with people from both the township and the city on a regular basis, collecting information. That's what a grant writer would have done at a cost, and they are doing that for our sustaining level of five hundred dollars a year. Now, when that application didn't result in us getting any money, it wasn't because of anything they did wrong, though. It was because they were out of money before ours even got looked at. But then, when this came back up again, because it's going to be on the, on the table again for us to submit with decisions being made in March, they, and the SEDP immediately got hold of the city and the township and said it's back. So they filled everything out. We met with them now again, updating information, and we'll get that sent in. And again, they're doing it on our sustaining level of five hundred dollars. Now, we sure don't have the kind of property available that they can bring in big businesses and, you know, really make us grow business-wise or commercial-wise. But I really think for what we, what our needs are, they fit the bill. And I think it's worth more than five hundred dollars. I don't know that it's worth four thousand dollars, though, which is what we used to pay.
I have witnessed Justin Horvath go to bat for small business in our area. I've had some experience with that. So it doesn't have to be the money businesses, and he, he at different times will go to meetings and to support people with rezonings and things like that. Yes, yeah, they kind of turn to whatever they're asked.
And I think if they see something that they think might be helpful to a local business, they just step right up and let them know about it. They don't even have to be asked. They just say, hey, you might want to look at this. So that's my thought.
My next question, if the council did agree to go to the next, the next level, would we do that at the end of this membership, our current membership?
You can, you can pay, well, you can pay your membership anytime. It's not like once a year for thirty days, they take membership money. We could pay our thousand dollars now, and then this would be our new membership time. Or we could wait till that one expires and then pay it. That'd probably be the smarter way to do it, because we get our five hundred dollars first, and then just let them know we're going to commit to a thousand when that expires, we pay the next level.
But you think it's in the summer, right?
February.
I'm thinking February.
February?
Yeah. Because it was after I'd been mayor for a little while.
Yeah, I know, because I knew it was when the new council and mayor came on. I just didn't remember when.
February, I think it is.
Could it be logical to give this court just to ask for the bills of the thousand that you said they approved, moving forward to.
Yep. Devin, Devin's just saying, if, if you do decide that you want to increase to the partner level at a thousand dollars, that I could email him, let him know we've had the discussion, the decisions, and they, we will increase our partner level to a thousand. They could send us an invoice with the February date when our other one expires. Then you'd have something actually to approve as far as a bill's concerned. What do you think?
It works for me. I've heard of a motion tonight that necessarily wait until we get the.
Sure. Well, let him know then that it's been agreed by council to go to the partner level, and that all the council members will consider serving on the board. And you can just think about.
I had a discussion today. I worked about putting that hundred pounds in as a block bag. It doesn't work.
Okay. And it doesn't honestly have to be a council member.
Could it be a planning commission member?
Yep.
I think we have a new guy coming in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There we go. Broke it in.
You know, the last person in, you vote them. If they're not there, you vote a president.
Yep.
The last new person became secretary at the first meeting, so.
That's right, you did, didn't you?
Zach.
Oh, really? You know why Jen became it, when she got out there, because she brought a computer with her. Oh, look, ready for the.
Thank you for stepping up, right? There you go. Okay. Thank you for that. I will communicate that to him. We need to talk about Halloween. It's been the council's responsibility to set the trick-or-treating hours. Halloween falls on a Sunday this year. Typical hours are six to eight. There is a plan right now in place. Amy Buck has headed it up for Coffee. I'm not sure what her last name is, but because it is on Sunday, she wants to get all the businesses involved in having stuff for the kids to do from four to six uptown, and then do trick-or-treating after that. Her thought in regard to future events like this for Halloween would be that if it's well attended and well received, that we would consider possibly having Perry's Halloween and trick-or-treating always on Saturday. And just making that the events thing from four to six, trick-or-treating six to eight on the Saturday before Halloween. But that's not what's on the table now, that's just something to think about for future. What we need to do tonight is set this year's trick-or-treating hours for Sunday, October 31st.
I move that trick-or-treat hours within the city of Perry will be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on October 31st, 2021, and therefore after. Support.
Motion by Bob, support by Steve. That trick-or-treat will be set in the city of Perry for 6:00 to 8:00 PM, October 31st, 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. We need to talk, I'm sorry, Jo, I ignored you. What you got?
Approval, possible approval for the SED membership?
Yep.
We're spending money, a thousand dollars.
No, we're not. We haven't voted to spend the money.
Because I was gonna say, I didn't hear go to move by, seconded by, that no spend a thousand dollars.
We haven't absolutely decided to spend the money, we're just gonna request an invoice for that, and then we'll decide.
Okay, all right, because I was gonna say, I went right past what I didn't hear, move by, seconded by.
I'm sorry, if I didn't speak up, I should speak up.
No, that's all right, I'm just keeping you honest.
Discussion regarding 2013 Public Act 270 compliance. I will let Devin address this. She did a good job explaining it to me.
So the mayor, yes, so this is in regards of our medical benefits, that public employer contributions, it's now May Day since 2011, the limits that governments, if they contribute. And so each year, it was in October, now in March, they give us, we go to the site and they give us our amounts. So that's what you see on the formulas that I give you, I'm giving you actual employees and what their current rate is monthly times 12. And then if you go below, I'm showing the actuals allowed according to the Senate Bill number seven. And then a grand total for the year, state allowed funds and then city actual. This year, we haven't seen a Blue Cross and New Shield rebate, some years we do get one, so that's another that I can add on it. At this point, we are five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twelve cents below the state allowed to spend for health. Another part of the law is what they had changed is in order for the city to get funds, and it started out as the EVIP, which was enabled for us to get funds, we had to submit this, there was three, most of everything else, it was the treasurer had to submit and have on their website. It's now not that abbreviation, because we all know, we've got lots of abbreviations, now it's CVTR. And again, it's another way for the, if the city wants their funding, they've combined a couple of things that have changed, stabilization fund is what Joanne is telling me, but in a nutshell, they've changed the name, combined a few funds, but if you want it, you have to step through these hoops. Joanne, again, has several different steps that she has to comply and put into it. Every year, I ask council whether they would want to consider opting out, which means that what I tried to prove to council is that we have been responsible enough to stay amongst the perimeters of it. There is the opting out, and then there's the 80/20. Now, the 80/20 is, the meaning of that is, is that the resolution has to be passed either stating that council opts out or does the 80/20 plan every year. And that resolution that is approved by council, I give to Jo and then she submits to the state. So the mayor wanted to make sure that you had the state figures, the actual figures, I gave you an example of what has been passed, that is the wording, and then at the next meeting, I would formally have this set up as a resolution. Is there any questions or discussion?
This is your, I want to make sure that's in the list, sir. If we opt out, we're just saying that we're in compliance to what the state wants us to do, correct?
Not necessarily.
Now, if you...
So the opt-out, let me, let me finish this just a second. So the opt-out means that you are willing to pay your employees. You don't, you should stay in the parameters, because once you get in trouble, you have that 80/20 go by. So this was put into place because governments were going under and they didn't, they were being too nice to cut off medical costs to save their budgets. So the government said, we're going to be the bad guy, and if you are not meeting these parameters, we're going to force you to do it. Well, then people got their act together, and so that rule kind of changed a little bit. But what, we don't want to get in a situation, and that's where I've proven your numbers, we don't want to be above the hard cap, because again, if we're in a situation, then you're making everybody pay 80/20 at a bigger, higher level. So know that the law says that you could opt out and pay your premiums, but it's smart to stay in the hard cap, and we are in the hard cap, is what it's called. I mean, that's not really confusing, but I didn't want to say that, that you could...
It's government, it's gonna be confusing.
Yes. So they give, they give local governments two options, so if you believe everything's going fine and you think you got everything in the hard cap but under control, you can just opt out and say, thank you very much, state, we got it, we're good, we're covered.
And that, that is the whole purpose of it, is because if you think about it, Devin can go out and shop for medical, you know, medical insurance, agrees to make these payments for this medical insurance, and the council would see the bill, the monthly bill or whatever. This way, they're making sure that the council and the powers that be are aware of what your costs are for your employees.
If we opt out, that allows us, the city, to pay 100% of the healthcare premiums.
Which we do.
Yep, currently do.
If we opt, then if we stay in it, then what's the 80/20 rules was, or we're under the cap, so we're okay.
We are, we, yeah, we do meet the parameters for being okay, but opting out allows us to pay 100% instead of, of the premium. Which is what we do now and in the past.
Since 2011, since the council has approved the opt-out, because we've stayed underneath the hard cap and agreed to pay our premium, but there was always that opportunity that council could change their mind and go with 80/20 and ask employees to pay 20%.
So if the city wanted to pay 80 and have the employees pay 20, then we'd have to go under that 80/20 rule, which we could do. And so you'll have time to think about it, we don't need to take action on this tonight. We'll just have discussion and try to answer questions, and you can give us some more thought, and we'll bring it back to the table next week with a resolution to see if that's how you want to go. The way that we have been, which is paying 100% of healthcare premiums, or if we want to make a change.
And I'm assuming we set the current new budget year up, we did it assuming 100% paid off.
We did.
Yeah.
And when this started in 2011, if you didn't meet that hard cap, you had to switch to 80/20.
Also, that's upset employees if we switch right on.
Yep.
So you're gonna pay it one way or the other? You pay it in insurance or you pay it wages? Either way.
I'm just here to give you the information.
I know, I'm not asking for you, I'm not asking for you to comment, I'm just stating my opinion, which may be based in fact.
You keep looking at it, looking at it.
So we will ask for this item to be on the agenda for the October 21st, is that the date? October 21st council meeting for a possible vote. Our next item is possible approval of the resignation that we heard tonight that Devin wrote.
I move to accept the resignation of Kelly Wilson, complaining commission with regret.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Steve, to accept Kelly Wilson's resignation from the planning commission with regret. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any other business to come before council tonight? I have one item I want you just to be aware of. Gosh, I just forgot his name. Billy Robach talked to me about putting some lights on the outside of the McQueen House, partly for security and partly just to enhance the nighttime appearance of the building. And I thought, well, that'd give us a bid and let's see what you think. So I have an electrical bid from Keach Electric, and it is for McQueen House exterior lighting. It totals a thousand dollars. And I'll get this out to all of you so you can see the breakdown of it. Keach Electric is local, if anybody knows John Keach, we've dealt with him before in other projects, they're very reputable, do a good job.
Is he talking about lights on the house themselves or like spotlights in the yard?
The run power to the flagpole area, two short post lights, and the lights will be pointed toward the house itself, each light will be on a photo eye and have a switch if the lights should want to be shut off. It'd be LED 50-watt fixtures. And the trench for the works not included in the bid, so the trench work would be needed on top of the thousand dollars for the price. This, he's not asking for the city to pay. I said, I think this should be covered by the city if we do it, but by the donations that should come in as a result of the donation drive that we're doing for parks in the McQueen House.
How many fixtures does he have on there?
Fixtures?
And your lights. Sound of the light, too.
Yeah, he says run power to flagpole area and two short post lights, lighting toward the house itself.
For a thousand dollars?
Each light will be on a photo eye and a switch if the lights should want to be turned off, lights will be LED 50-watt fixtures, also a jelly jar type light affixed by the back door on interior switch, so there's a third one. Bob will also be LED. So, I mean, it sounds to me like there's three.
The reason I ask, the light, all lights you can do for a lot less money if you do low voltage, you don't have to then dig a trench that's 18 inches deep to be the code, because it's, he's running line wire, line voltage. If you have a transformer that converts ACD here, 1/10 to 12 volt, the fixtures aren't going to get fixtures for $60.
And those would be LED lights? Well, if you want to...
I'm just saying, it's, if they want to do that, then we can have a discussion when you bring it before council, what it would be done for less, for a lesser amount.
Well, I think if you've got, if you've got something you could put together to show a different cost, we would need that in order to have that discussion. So could you put that together?
I can get some, yeah, I can.
Yep, that would be fun. There's one other thing, and I just have to ask Devin, is this something that we need to talk about, because it was laying on my desk, but then I forgot to ask you about it?
I was going to ask you about that and see what you interpreted it. I'm wondering whether we use it for when a need's canceled, or if you can use it in the future. So I guess, I read it through and I went, I'm not sure, because the wording's trick me on it. So do we want to get back with Justin and then give it to council?
Yeah, we can. I'll just let you guys know what this, a resolution to allow the mayor's authority to pay bills due when the city council meeting is canceled due to known business, or if we don't have a quorum, or if it's ice and snow outside and we can't have a meeting, but we've got bills due. So we'll put this resolution out to Justin, have him look it over, and then bring it back for council to make a decision on what's...
I think that was an outpour of the discussion we had, we're talking about going to potentially one meeting a month.
So this was from Justin. The only thing that I question is it a one and done, like if you put it at the next council meeting, will it cover any type of cancellations? Or is a template, which we asked them to do, to also possibly have, that you would use for...
But let's ask him, but this looks to me like a one and done. Because you can't, you can't have a quorum to decide this if you can't have a meeting because you don't have a quorum.
Well, we were talking about having one meeting a month.
Right, yeah.
And so this was a motion to do at that meeting, because you were canceling the next meeting.
Right. But let's ask him if this can also fit the bill in case of not being able to meet and we've got bills to pay.
I think you're right, too, but I would like to verify.
Yeah, let's talk with him, we'll bring that back up. Any other business to come before council? Any public comments that we need to hear at this time? Council discussions and observations, anybody? Items for next agenda? Bob's gonna agree to some options for lighting on the McQueen House. Ordinance approval, ordinance approval, ordinance...
56, I think.
Anything else we need to, matches we have on the next meeting?
We ought to talk about, we're going to do with the grant information that we had tonight.
Oh, yes, the grant writer.
Grant writer.
We'll put that for discussion with a possible proposal for hiring, or you just want to talk about it and then decide?
I don't know what the group thinks, I'd like to consider, are we ready to bring forth a proposal, actually a motion that would say, you know, we put a fixed period of time on it possibly?
He's got an agreement for you.
Right.
So what do you mean by that, I guess, just to clarify?
His agreement, or his proposal didn't set a timeframe. I would add to that, that if we agree to enter into adopting this proposal, that we do it on a trial basis for, I'll pick a time for discussion, six months.
Yeah. Oh, I read that it was open-ended after November, so it was like for today, if we would, if we would agree to it, and then after November, it's kind of...
We can cancel it anytime, it says that.
Cancel it anytime. Or you want more, you want longer?
I would like to think that we probably need to have more than a month or two if we're going to try to evaluate what service we're getting for the dollars spent. I don't think that in a month period of time... I don't think that in a month period of time.
No, but the, the agreement that he, the proposal template that he gave us, it's cancellation by any party at any time.
Correct.
So we can, we can enter into that agreement with him, and we can, as a council, we don't see any action or think we're getting our money's worth in three months, we can bring it to court and say, we want to cancel this.
Right.
Or six months or whatever. So there, I don't think you need to add any language to it because it's already covered.
I don't think in the agreement with them that we need to, but I'd like to suggest that we as a council make a determination that we're going to enter into this basically month-to-month agreement, but we want to allow a period of time for evaluation of effectiveness.
So define that in the motion.
And that the motion would define for internal purposes.
I would do that. I don't even know if we really want to do that, because that's telling you if, if we don't think he's performed, six months, he's gone.
Right.
Do you want to see it?
He doesn't see that.
Just for our.
Yeah, it is, if it's in our motion, it's public information.
Oh, well, that's true.
I think that as a council, if we would internally check and say, any council member can bring up an agenda item. So then we can say in six months, if you don't like it, I don't like it, maybe whoever can bring, I will put this on the agenda to, to address this, to revisit it.
Yep.
So would you like a motion prepared for our next meeting, or do you want to just have more discussion at the next meeting and decide at that point?
I think we should have a motion that we can look at, have a discussion, but look at, definitely have a motion that if we decide to, since we are too handed down, we think all, everyone should be here for that.
Okay.
Just to, you know.
To a discussion for the possible motion.
So my next step would be, which I had already talked to Mayor, she said, wait, to listen to you tonight, is that because it's an agreement, it has to be proofed by the city attorney? So are you pretty much happy with that agreement to consider at the next meeting?
I, I think, yes, we should be proactive. In my mind, I'm leaning towards the approval of that person, but we should have the attorney look at that just for any hidden things.
We have to do that, but I don't want to give something that you didn't want.
No, proactive, meaning have it before we go, before we have a motion to vote on, let's take the step and get it taken care of before that.
But my point was, is are you happy with what it says? There's no spending money at the attorney if you don't let the wording of the agreement that you have in your hands.
I personally, I don't issue with it.
Okay, that's all I kind of wanted, a general consensus, and that that would be my next step in the.
Yeah, my whole reason for bringing it up is I'd like to get to the point that we can make a decision, are we ready to go forward as opposed to letting it slide off the table again with other.
Yeah, thanks for making those arrangements there for him to be here too. Any other items for the next agenda, or any council discussion or observations? Then this meeting's adjourned, 9:30 p.m.